All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Welcome to the September 30th, 2025, meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees. Before we begin, a quick reminder, please remain muted unless speaking and state your name clearly for the record. Now take a roll call of the trustees. Trustee Agadelo Ortiz.
Present.
Trustee Brooks, present. Trustee Hampton Dance.
Present.
Trustee Kafour.
Present.
Trustee Pincombe.
Present.
And Trustee Valdez. We have a note taker, but not a trustee. Okay. Moving on, I'll recognize Ms. Tozer to provide a brief overview of the Tier One applications.
Thank you. So through the chair, tonight's focus is on Tier One applications, which were due September 17th. A total of nine proposals were received, but one applicant has withdrawn their application, leaving eight proposals that will be presented to the board tonight. Each applicant has up to five minutes to present, followed by questions and comments from the trustees. After tonight, the trustees will score each application using either the online form or the Excel scoring sheet that I shared via email. And I have provided each trustee here in person with a copy of the spreadsheet, all two of you. So scoring must be submitted by October 8th unless the board feels they can complete the review sooner. At the next meeting, we will review scores and discuss potential conditional commitments. We'll determine the specific date for that meeting, which we can do under Agenda Item Three. It is currently scheduled for October 8th, but that may change due to trustee schedules, but we'll get to that. I also want to note that preparing these applications is resource-intensive, and even if we can't fund all proposals due to limited resources, the feedback that you as trustees provide through scoring discussion will be invaluable to applicants for future rounds. And I'll turn it back to the chair.
Well, now proceed. We'll now proceed with applicant presentations. Each applicant will have five minutes, followed by trustee questions. Presentations will proceed in the order listed on the agenda, with the exception of 51 Illinois Street, which has been withdrawn. And with that, we'll invite Colony on Grove Beach up to the podium.
Okay. I'm assuming this is on. It sounds like it's on. I'm Craig Nicholson. I'm with Affirmative Investments. We're the development consultant for Colony Retirement Homes. And with me is...
Mary Ann Delory, Executive Director, Colony Retirement Homes.
And we are here today to talk about the second phase of Colony on Grove, which we call Beach. We were in front of you back in December of 2023 for the first phase. And while we still haven't started construction on the first phase, which we call Apple, we do have commitments for mass development for 2026 volume cap, and we'll be closing for both Apple and Beach in that timeframe of early 2026. So that is that. We are requesting $400,000 from the trust, which makes up about 1.12% of our total development costs. So between the $400,000 and the $250,000 we've requested of city home funds, the $650,000 of city money would leverage an additional $35.1 million of investment into Colony on Grove Beach. So this is the conceptual layout for all of Colony on Grove. The first phase is the one in the upper left. That's Apple. Beach is the one directly in front of it. To give some orientation at the kind of bottom right-hand side, that is Grove Street. To the left, to the right of the image would be the Forest Grove Middle School, and to the left of the image would be Rosemont. So this is a concept plan that takes the 139 units of Colony on Grove that exist now, and over four phases, replaces them with 220 new units, or new and revised revamped units. The buildings are a combination of ranging from three to five stories, kind of stepping back along the way. Each building has at least four stories on part of it. With regards to Colony on Beach itself, we'll be replacing 36 units with 48 new units in the Beach building. So preserving 36, adding 12 new units of affordable housing. So pretty much the rest of the presentation is pretty pictures. This is a view of Grove Street, looking at both the third phase, which we call Cherry. Our phasing follows an A, B, C, D plan with tree names, native tree names. Thank you, Mary Ann. And the building, the main building closest to the street is Cherry. The building connected to it and a little bit to the left behind the large pine tree is Beach. So this is the first, this is the second phase, which is the first phase, which will actually connect all the way down to Grove Street and have some improvements along Grove Street. Next phase, next page. This is the entry on the west side of the building, so basically Forest Grove Middle School behind you in that view. And that is the Apple building in the background on the, to the right and up the hill. So this is an entryway that goes into a large part of the common area. It's covered for ease of access for seniors. There's some outdoor gathering space, really just a way to bring both indoor and outdoor capabilities for the residents. You can see that there are balconies. Every unit in the entire development will have balconies, individual private balconies for the residents, which is consistent with what they have now, which is an important thing that we want to keep as we redevelop, is not to have them lose any amenities, but just gain amenities through the process. Next slide. This is the eastern entrance, or the east side of the building's entrance. The building itself is on the right. You see the raised planter beds. That's a, again, another thing that exists now is some planter beds. We'll be creating new ones, raising them up, so residents don't have to get on their hands and knees to do gardening. And that enters into some common area space. Again, that's the Apple building up on the left, up on the hill. So you can start seeing how these really start taking shape on the site and really adding to the nature of it. I will say, because I didn't mention earlier, that within the redevelopment, not only are there new buildings, but the site and the landscaping will also be redone so that paths are of appropriate slopes, that they're accessible throughout the entire development. What is being done here connects to what is existing, and those will be redeveloped and connected. So there aren't any gaps in connectivity between Apple and Beach. What is to be built, the remaining units, which are all Colony Two, and the amenities that will all be shared throughout the, throughout the process and throughout the development. And then the final, this is a layout of the common area space that we're proposing as part of Colony on Grove Beach. The original plan had most of this common area being scheduled for the fourth phase. However, after looking at that and really thinking about the residents, we wanted to kind of fast-forward the common area and bring a good amount of that programming and that space to the residents now. There's laundry on each floor. There's two elevators servicing this building. There's mail. In the kind of bottom of the image, middle of it, there's an arts and crafts room, so a specific arts and crafts room with an office for the person providing those services. There's a catering kitchen, as well as kind of a show kitchen, so that there can be cooking classes for the residents. There's a large gathering area for events and, you know, social events and meetings and things of that nature, and then just kind of lounge areas for people to gather in this part of the community room. While there is these kitchens, there's not a meal service at Colony on Grove. It is just catered events and demonstration things to teach people how to cook for themselves or cook more healthy, or whatever the program is. And with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll open it up to the trustees for questions. Do we have trustees with questions? Go ahead, trustee Hampton Dance.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to clarify on the amount of new spaces that are going to be provided, new units that will be built, the number. What's that number? And how many of those are ADA?
So there will be 12 new units of incorporated into Colony on Grove Beach, because we're demolishing 36 existing units, building 48. In Beach, I believe we have 10% of the units as fully ADA accessible, so that would be five, because we round up. No real designation as to whether those are the new units or the replacement, but since the existing 36 units are not ADA compliant at all, then they're, they're very much open to, to new residents that need that kind of living capacity.
Thank you.
Other trustees?
I have a few questions.
Okay.
First revolves around relocation of existing tenants. What is your plan there now that you're combining both the first phase and second phase, and how will that work?
Sure. So we've completed the relocation of everybody in the first phase. So we now have three buildings that are completely vacant. We've contracted with a company called Housing to Home to manage the relocation of the second phase. Colony Retirement Homes has been basically reserving vacancies, not only in Colony Two to accommodate this, but in their other properties. And we are actively underway with relocation for the remaining people in Colony One for the Beach phase, and feel confident that we will be able to house all of them, maybe have a few left over that need to go to a third-party's facility, but trying to house them all internal to the Colony portfolio. We have a healthy relocation budget, so if we do need to relocate a few people to a, to a third-party place, I feel confident with the amount of new construction of market-rate housing, we'd be able to do that in this area for one-bedrooms. And of course, that is all covered by the project, so it would not be a burden to the residents themselves. So all the packing, all the moving, all the, any increase in rent that would take place would all be a part of the project's cost.
Second question, just revolves around the total development cost. It is a little bit on the higher side. Have you gone out to bid yet with, with both phases? Is this an estimate? Where, where are we with that?
So we bid out Apple and selected Delbrook as our general contractor, because they did have the best price. We have been leveraging Delbrook to do the pricing for Beach as well. They're currently in the process of looking at the numbers as a combined project and are due to give us updated pricing on that in mid-October. So I think these numbers are realistic. We are certifying as passive house, so we do have some additional energy compliance things and efficiency things going into the pricing. But we do expect to have some cost savings, because we're doing it as a single project. You know, not as many requests for information, not as many submittals, streamlined, easier to manage a combined timeframe for doing them both at the same time, less than if you did them sequentially, so we'll save on some general conditions. So we do think there is some cost savings coming our way. I don't have the exact number of that yet.
Okay. And then just the final question regarding similar, just you're saying realistic budget, realistic timeframe for getting this project going, you said is June-ish next year?
Yeah, I think, you know, my, right now, we're basically ready. Our Apple plans are 100%. The Beach plans are at about 85. So we, we are in good plans in terms of our, our construction drawings. Realistically, we would need to get EO HLC to schedule a business meeting for us to really get everybody focused on the closing process. And since we don't have bond cap until 2026, we're not confident they'll let us do that meeting before 2026. From there, it's probably about a four-ish month process to get to the closing line. So if we can get them to do it earlier in this year to start the process, it'll be earlier next year that we, we are able to finish and break ground. But I think May-June is a reasonable timeframe right now to think about that.
Great. Thank you. One last time, any other trustees? Go ahead.
Through the chair, I just had a question regarding the breakdown of units that are at or below 30% of the median income versus 60%. Can you just tell us how that compares to the existing breakdown of units on the site?
So as far as what they'll be restricted as in terms of an affordable housing restriction, 10% of the units will be, is it 10 or is it 15? Actually, I think it's closer to 15, will be below 30% AMI. I forgot my phone at my apartment, and I don't have those things readily available to me, but I can follow up with Jeanette to provide that information. In reality, we, Colony One, the 61 units, 60 of them had HUD Section Eights. Almost all of them fall in the below 50 to below 30 range, and that is really who's going to be populating this. So, you know, affordable housing restriction versus actual population, I think the population is significantly higher than 15% at that below 30% AMI range, if that answers your question.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next will be the 12 Benefit Street project. If you could just come out and speak into the microphone, please.
My name is Charles Boykwe, and I'm the project manager for the 12 Benefit Project. I'm here with my architect. The main architect, Jose Guzman, was not, unable to make it, so Rami, who has more knowledge about the project, is here to support me here. So the project is basically about converting an existing three-unit dwelling into six units through interior walls and layout, which will be reconfigured to create additional units, with no expansion to the exterior of the building. Maximum uses of existing space while preserving the building's original character. This also maintains the architectural integrity of the property and the surrounding neighborhood fabric. It also aligns with the core goals of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, including increasing affordable housing supply, supports preservation of existing affordable housing units, and promotes sustainable urban infill. We are currently looking for $288,500 to help with the completion of the project. This is also going to include two of the unit, two of the six units being income restricted to serve households earning below 60% of AMI for 30 years. The project's scope involves intensive restructuring of the internal walls to optimize space and improve functionality, redesign of the unit layout to create one-three-bedroom unit, three-two-bedroom units, and two-studio apartments. It will also upgrade the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing system to meet modern codes and efficiency standards. It will also ensure that all renovation comply with current accessibility requirements and building regulations. And I just wanted to add that one of the units will be ADA compliant. It also transforms existing space into safe, modern, and comfortable units while maximizing housing density. The project is currently in the execution phase, with expected completion by the end of the year. We're currently working on the roof, electrical, plumbing, and HVAC, and the schedule is for the inspection to be completed by the end of this week. Then the sprinkler system install, insulation, board, and plaster. Final inspection is expected by December 30th. Total project estimates is 1.156241. We have secured funding from crowd lending up to $855,000. That includes construction costs and a line of credit to help us to complete the project. But we're seeking $288,500 from the Affordable Trust Fund to assist, to help us with the cash flow of the project, to make it more feasible and sustainable long-term. We also have other funding sources of $152,741. ARV of the project while completed is $1.35 million. So why the Affordable Trust Fund? The project is well underway, as I mentioned. It's about 60% complete. We're expecting to finish by the end of the year. We want to, hopefully, when we get this funding, be able to focus on quality and compliance, because this property has been inhabited for over five years. As you saw in the pictures, it's all, it was all boarded up, and we bring in the property back to life. And we've seen some cost overruns, and that's why we're here, to seek some additional funding. I believe that the project also aligns with the mission of the Trust Fund to create affordable housing within Worcester. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up to the trustees for questions.
Through the chair, could you just go back and explain or tell me what is 30%, what's 60? For the, how many were going to be 30% below 60%? Did I miss something?
Both units will be 60% below, 60% AMI. Both units will be 60% AMI.
I have it. I'm sorry, I have it. I looked at the wrong page. My apologies.
Anything else? Okay. Trustee Pincombe?
Through the chair. So construction's already underway, it sounds like, right? You're, you're almost, your construction's well on the way.
Well, yes.
Already.
Yes.
The fire suppression system, is that being installed as well? Sprinklers?
Yes.
For the six units? Okay.
Yes, we have some of the best contractors in town working on this. We have Augustus Sprinkler working on our sprinkler system design and install.
Thank you.
Gustav Simploming is also working on the fire suppression line as well.
Okay. Looking at your finances, I see you have a 12% interest rate that's come to maturity tomorrow?
On the 17th of October.
I, I read October 1st, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So October 7th?
17th.
17th?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do you feel secure in making those payments that are needed?
Yes. We've, we've also recently reached out to crowd lending to give it, give us a three-month extension, and that, that will bring us to January 17th, which we believe we would have completed the project and rented the units out.
Have they approved that request?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions.
Trustees on that?
Through, through, through the chair, can I just clarify, if you know at this point, which of the units, and you mentioned here that there's two studios, three two-beds and one three-bed, which of the units would be the affordable units?
Unit number one, and from the architectural drawing, unit number one, which is a two-bedroom ADA-compliant unit, will be restricted. Also, unit number five will be restricted. That is also a two-bedroom, two-bath unit.
No? So I have, I think, just one question. As far as, are there any historic preservation requirements for this project at all?
Yes. We went through the zoning and planning board.
Okay.
They gave us conditions, and we followed through with the conditions. Those conditions are necessary to give us the housing permit, I mean, the occupancy permit.
And what, were they restrictions on windows or porches or?
Yes, there were restrictions on, on the porches, the eaves of windows, and so, yeah, we, we're working on making sure we preserve all of those.
Is that work complete now, or does that still have to be done?
There is some portion of that work that is done when we completed the siding, but we, so we covered a lot of that, so it doesn't get damaged, and we're going to be removing that once the, the project is completed.
Okay. And this building, it was built before 1978. Are you going to have LED certificates at the completion?
We will have LED certificates, yes. We've already had some, some form of inspection performed, and we have the inspection certificate basically saying that, basically saying what they found. We tested for asbestos, we tested for other things. I'm, I'm not sure what the chemicals that were tested, but it was already tested. We have the report of the testing.
Thank you. Justies, any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, 26 Claridge, renovation for a homeownership project.
I'm with Go Venture Capital Group. I'm here on behalf of 26 Claridge Drive, which is a renovation of an existing single-family home. If you would like to go to the next slide. So this is a, an existing home that we are purchasing from the city of Worcester, with a restriction to sell to a first-time homebuyer, as well as an affordable restriction at 80% AMI. The lot is about a quarter of an acre, 1,800-square-foot home, ranch-style, close to Worcester State. Go to the next slide. So this is in the Tattnik neighborhood. As I mentioned, it's close to Worcester State. There's the WRTA bus station off of Chandler Street, right at the end of the neighborhood. You've got Tattnik Plaza, and then off the page is towards downtown Worcester City Hall area that we're currently in. So if you go to the next slide, these are some existing conditions of the building, which the building itself has been vacant and dormant for quite a bit, which has put some wear and tear on the property itself. There's water damage, open holes within the building itself. There's, there's a lot here that needs to bring this building back up to standards to be habitable. And the reason for seeking funding through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is to kind of offset those costs due to the of offset those costs due to the building being vacant for so long. There's concerns of some structural repairs, as well as asbestos and abatement for the project itself, mold, and just moisture damage over the course of the property being vacant and roof leaking over time. If you'd like to go to the next slide. This is just kind of a layout of the existing conditions. So like I mentioned, it is a ranch-style property. There is a basement on a portion of the property. It's currently a three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath property, which we tend to maintain. The goal is really, the way we're visioning this is because of how dis-repaired the property is, we would essentially fully gut the property and install all-new materials and fixtures within the facility itself. Things that we can maintain and reuse, we will, but for the most part, the condition of the property right now is in pretty rough shape. So again, I'm here seeking funding from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund with the restriction of selling it to a first-time homebuyer with 80% AMI affordable restriction. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up to questions from the trustees.
Through the chair. I guess my question is, like, what is your timeframe for this build? Looking at the photo, there is a lot to be done. So it would be, what would your timeframe be like? How would your process go in finding the applicant for the first-time homebuyer, searching for a home in the 80% AMI? Like, what would that whole process be like?
So from now and probably till the end of the year is the time period that we would look to finalize and close with the city of Worcester to start construction. That includes submitting for a building permit that we would receive. The project itself is entitled in terms of zoning and everything else, but we would need to receive a building permit for the construction, which we would, again, do between now and the end of the year. And then we would move into construction Q1 of next year. And then kind of within the process of construction, we would work to establish the affordable application and kind of lottery process that would go into seeking a first-time homebuyer that qualifies within the income limitations and regulations that have been set forth as part of this Housing Trust Fund, as well as the request for proposal that we are purchasing from the city of Worcester with those restrictions.
Okay, thank you. And through the chair, I just have one more question. I know it's a three-bedroom, two-bath at current moment. Since you're going to gut the property, would you increase the bedroom size or try to maximize space in any kind of way?
The intent would be to maintain its current configuration. If there's opportunities to provide a more open concept, if you will, which would be to really remove non-structural partition walls, we potentially will look into that. But the layout that you saw on the screen previously is essentially the layout of a two, three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath layout that we would maintain.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. Some questions regarding cost, right? It seems that your soft costs seem to be on the higher side, right? I'm looking at some notes here. Marketing and AFHMP costs $22,000. And then really, there's $12,000 in bank fees and $11,000 in interest and finance. And can you elaborate on both of those for the board, please? Thank you.
Yeah, so the soft cost itself, so we intend to supplement funding with debt on this project for the course of construction and the time that it takes to lease, to sell the property. So that interest cost is really a function of interest rates at the time of us closing on the property and getting us through construction to close. And then on the marketing side, between really the work that goes into establishing the first-time homebuyer and income certifying that they're within the income regulations with the affordable plan, there's kind of increased cost there when it comes to the marketing side of things.
Thank you. Another question, it may be on here and I didn't see it. Do you have a price you'll be selling the house for already? Is that something you've agreed upon? And is there any certain rules you have to follow because it has to fall in the affordability?
Yep. So within the requirements of the purchase of the property from the city of Worcester, there's really two restrictions. One being a first-time homebuyer, which they can't, they haven't owned a primary residence for the past three years. And then the second one is a person earning 80% of AMI, as well as it has to be below Worcester's median sale price. So with really those last two, we're projecting the sale to be in that 300 to $320,000 sale price, based off of comps that have sold within the last year that also had that 80% AMI restriction on it. So with that really backstop, if you will, and the cost of construction, this funding from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund would help offset that to make the project viable and successful.
Thank you. No other questions for me?
Through the chair, I'm just curious, for that particular area that you speak of, what's the median for housing over there cost, to your knowledge?
So the research I have done, the median sale price in Worcester, I think, is around But like I said, with that additional restriction of affordability, that would bring that sale price down, which I'm forecasting to be around that $300,000 to $320,000 sale price.
Thank you.
Trustees on nine? Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, 36 Fifth Avenue Rental Project.
Hi, my name is Robert Pontieri, and I'm requesting $150,000 to help with the cost of brand-new construction of a four-unit. One of those units will be at the, below the 60%. And one of those units will be handicapped accessible.
Trustees, questions?
Yes, so through the chair. This is new construction, is what I'm seeing here. Have you started? Are you anywhere in the construction phase yet?
The lot is cleared. All of the approvals are in place, you know, through zoning. We are basically at the point of shovel-ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair. Have you secured any other funding from any other places for this project?
So I have a, I closed on a loan with Savers Bank for $460,000. And then I have my own funds.
Through the chair. I see here you own other properties. You're a landlord in the city?
Yeah, yes, sir. I've been a landlord since 2005, servicing CMHA, Worcester Housing, DMH. So for the last 20 years of all my properties have basically catered to folks 30% below and some 60, but...
So you're familiar with the affordable housing restrictions and so forth, then?
Yes, correct. They're, all my properties and all my tenants come from those four organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. When do you anticipate the closing or the finishing of the property?
If I were to receive the grant, would be looking to finish this thing up in six to eight months, weather permitting. We're literally shovel-ready. We've done all the homeworks done.
Trustees on nine?
Through the chair. Have you, do you, I'm not sure if I've seen any blueprints or any kind of layouts. Did you present any kind of layouts or anything of what the property would look like or your expectations?
Yes, I did, and I do have blueprints here with me today as well.
Thank you.
So through the chair, the drawings that you provided with your application will be available to the board to review as you are scoring the applications. But I only have the hand-drawn. If you have anything additional beyond the hand-drawn...
Oh, I'm sorry, no, we have just all the hand-drawn blueprints. I also just wanted to add, you know, this, one of the reasons why I got the approval to, all the variances to do this project, you know, the lot was an eyesore. It looked like a city dump. And since then, we've cleaned it up, you know, significantly. And it's basically going to go from an eyesore in the neighborhood to, you know, a brand-new four-family unit. So, you know, we're keeping the architecture to match the other homes in the neighborhood. And I just, you know, I got 20 years of experience as a landlord, so I know how to manage properties. I know how to keep them going for years. I have all the properties that I bought back in 2005 today and been successful with housing these folks and running them right. And I got a lot of letters of recommendation, you know, from CMHA and some other places just to speak to the type of landlord that I am in terms of taking care of the property, keeping the property up. Tenant needs something, we're there. So I'm a real hands-on guy in terms of everything from the purchase to, you know, the maintenance and the management and the collecting and everything, so...
Through the chair. I don't question your ability to be a landlord at all. You've done that for several years now, being a landlord. Congratulations. Have you ever developed a property before? Have you ever done any new construction? And also, who is the gentleman that's with you?
Okay, to the first question is, yes. The home I live in at 2 Marie Street in Auburn was a custom home that was built by my builder, Mike Conan, which I took part in, you know, the plans and, you know, the layout of the design, but I think he could probably answer a lot of your construction questions. He's been a builder for 30 years with a great reputation here in the city.
I guess the only question I would have for you, sir, and through the chair, is have you done four units before? Have you done multis? Or are you a single-family construction?
Yeah, we've done about 300 projects in my 30 years, and the majority of them have been new, single-family homes. We've done numerous multi-families, but the majority of them have been new, single-family construction.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Yep.
Any other questions on nine for trustees?
I was just going to add, through the chair, I was going to ask about the unit mix in terms of the number of beds or studios. Do you have a sense of what that is? And apologies if you provide that.
Number of bedrooms, I think. Are they studio, all studios? Are they one-bedrooms or?
They're all small one-bedrooms, that's correct. They're all efficiencies.
I guess the one question I have also, you've done a lot of work with agencies, with vouchers and things. Are, the funding through the Trust Fund requires working with the subsidy, getting the units on the subsidized housing inventory, including having an affirmative fair housing marketing plan? Have you consulted or talked to a consultant yet on that, or where does that stand?
Yes, I did. I did reach out to somebody, and she does these types of, she said 40B and worked with the EOHLC.
EOHLC, yep.
So I'm going to bring her in on this as like an admin. You know, typically, when I get a tenant, I, listen, my tenant's been open with me for 10-plus years. So I don't think I'm going to need a lot of help once I receive one. And we take pretty good care of them. They tend to stay, you know, for a lifetime. But they have the resources available.
Thank you. Trustees, last chance. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, next, Seeds of Hope Tiny Homes Rentals.
I do not have a PowerPoint. We have an application that we submitted. I don't know if that's accessible, but we've been working, my name's Andy Howard. I am the Development Director for Worcester Community Housing Resources. About a year ago, a little less than a year ago, some very persuasive people in the city of Worcester, including Dr. Castile, the Director of Public Health Department, the head of the United Way, Tim Garvin, who I'm sure you all know, and former Senator Harriet Chandler, got together with a group of people in the affordable housing industry and said, "Why can't we do housing faster and cheaper than going through all of the rigamarole involved in getting funding and in zoning and permitting?" We said, "Well, you know, it's complicated." And here we are, less than a year later, and we have a project that is ready to go. It's an interesting project in that it uses a new type of modular home construction. You've probably seen articles in the newspapers. Basically, these are smaller modules than the big ones you see on trucks going down the highway to be put on single-family lots. These are small modules. They're towed behind, as the developer of this system calls it, an F-350. I think you might be able to get away with a 250 on these, but they're about 550 square feet. And they're single-box modules. Jeanette, if you can find the pictures that went in with the application, that would probably be great, but if you can't, I have them on here. They just aren't in a PowerPoint. Okay, all right. So in any event, these are sort of shed dormer style. So there's an attic roof that's at an angle, shed-type roof, and they're 540 square feet. They are built very quickly. It's eight weeks from putting the deposit down to having four of these units ready to be set. We have saved considerably on the costs. The costs for a typical stick-built unit, excuse me, of new construction funded by the state runs an average of about $800,000 per unit. We are running at about 200 and some thousand per unit, as we have put in our application. They'll be inexpensive, but they'll be high-quality. They're built indoors in a factory on Southbridge Street by a local manufacturer. They are certified by the state and by the local building department. The project is being accomplished with a series of private donations and with a couple of grants that are not from the traditional housing sources because they can be processed a little faster. That's why we're here tonight. The sponsors of this project, the working group, as I said, includes Dr. Castile, Tim Garvin, and Harley Chandler, and those can all be highly persuasive people. So we have raised over $300,000, almost 400, in matching funds, private donation funds to go toward this so far. I have pumped the budget up with some contingencies for construction and site cost overruns because that happens in this world. All of the professionals involved in this project, the attorney, Todd Rodman, who I'm sure you are all... All of the professionals involved in this project, the attorney, Todd Rodman, who I'm sure you are all familiar with, Sean Brennan from Lamro Pagano Architects, and Mike Andre from Graves Engineering are doing this pro bono. WCHR is taking half of what the normally allowed and usual developer's fee would be for doing this. And I've been playing bandleader for this particular group for several months now. We are building on a piece of property that we have under agreement with the city of Worcester. It was RFP'd by the city in June. We responded and we were selected as the primary developer. Since then, we've been working on site plans, designs, permitting, zoning. We've been to the building department and it will be a Dover Amendment-type of housing project involving four units. The four little cottages are designed for seniors, over 55s, who are or recently have been homeless. This is the fastest-growing part of the homeless population is 55 pluses. And these project, this project, these cottages will be designed to make their lives a lot easier. So this is the, it'll, they'll all be fully handicapped, accessible. They'll all be built with some outdoor recreational space immediately adjoining the cottage. And they will all be constructed with the ability to resist damage from wheelchairs and from maybe accidents and spills from people that don't have their full mechanical mobility at the time. So this is the project. It's four tiny cottages. We are, this Affordable Housing Trust at $50,000 per unit will fill a critical gap, bring us down to just over $100,000 in our funding gap of additional money to raise. We have commitments from the State Department of Public Health. We have a commitment from HLC of sorts to help fund an operating reserve for the first few years of operation, which will make sure that we don't run out of money or have maintenance issues or other problems that are common in the first few years of a project. I can tell you honestly, I've been doing this since 1975. This is one of the most exciting projects I've ever worked with. And the units are going to be fantastic. They look good and they will be sustainable for people who are very low-income and are 55 and older, which I'm going to be soon, so. Any questions?
Thank you. Open it up to the trustees.
Through the chair. I can see how excited you are about this project. One of the things I noted on here, and let me just find it here. This is going to be connected to city sewer, correct?
Yes.
All right, because it said on their development budget is missing sewer connection and permitting fees.
Yeah, it's, it's in the contingency at this point because we don't know what it will be. And we just finished the design work. So we haven't had, I've allowed enough for it, I think, in the site development work. And we bumped up the site development budget beyond what the original contractor proposal was. So I think we have enough to cover it. But again, we just finished the sewer connection design this week. We're going before Planning Board for definitive site plan approval tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. What type of services, because of the population that you're servicing, are there going to be some socials work-type services available on the property? Or how is that going to work?
Yes, we have a contract with Open Sky Community Services who will provide services to all four residents. They believe that they can do this using existing benefit resources and services that are available to people that are 55 or older and are in need of various services to keep them stable. We also will be doing our own property management on this. I neglected to say in describing it that this project is directly adjacent to our property at 866 Main Street, which is the purple building you probably drive by often. And so we'll have maintenance people start repair stocks and so forth immediately next door if something needs fixing.
Trustee Hampton Dance?
Thank you, through the chair. My question is, are all of these units going to be built on one lot? And what's the size of the lot?
The lot is, Jeanette, I'm hoping you can help me. It's, I think, about 12,000 square feet, but it's an oddly shaped lot. If you were to go to the building department with a proposal to build a single-family home, you could build one narrow, single-family home. One of the things that makes this model of these small modules so attractive is that they can fit on all kinds of, I don't want to say scrap, but unused or underused land that it may be in tax title, this was in tax title. And nobody could afford feasibly to build a project on it that would pay for itself. So we're taking this, putting four units on it, and now it works financially. There are back lots. There are scraps of tax titled land that have not had development proposals. And there are a lot of people, I'm sure, that would have an idea about accessory dwelling units on their own properties, whether for profit or for family members or whatever. This design, and we hope this type of modular construction, can fit almost anywhere. And that's, we hope this will be a new model for developing additional units in the city, market and below-market. And we hope that we'll be able to replicate it ourselves and with other partners and that other people will start doing this. But the concept of a small modular unit is, I think, a game-changer.
Thank you. And you answered my question inadvertently about maintenance, because I did have a question about maintenance. But I also wanted to ask about, like, as far as, like, what other amenities would be available to these 55-plus in parking? Is there, is there parking, like, like the accessibility of the units?
Most of these individuals and couples, both couples and individuals are eligible, do not have cars. But we have a parking lot and it's next door. So we will grant whatever license or other legal paperwork is necessary so that any of the people who live here who do have a car will have a place to park it. And it'll, and it'll be, the parking lot is well-lit. The project itself will be well-lit, but with the sky-friendly lighting, so the light shines down. So it'll be a very welcoming place, we think.
Thank you.
Other questions, trustees? So I, I guess I just have one question. With this being a specialized population and funding from the trust fund subject to the subsidized housing inventory for the state, how do you intend to manage that tenant selection plan and make sure it meets?
We're gonna call in the experts and do a tenant selection plan that meets the city's requirements, make sure that it is eligible for listing on the state inventory and that we have a fair opportunity for all. This project is not, at this time, coming with rent subsidies. So we do not have to accept entries from the coordinated entry system. But we are hopeful that we will get a contract from HLC that will cover that. And we have an operating subsidy that will give us two years to get rent subsidies in there. So if people don't have rent subsidies, we'll have two years to get them on a program that does.
Thank you.
Through the chair, one question, please. In terms of your population, are you working with other community services such as UMass, EMTs, and other individuals who service the homeless in that particular area? Because they're very well-populated over there.
We, we will be working with, through Open Sky, with all of the resources that they bring to the table. So we expect that, and of course, our friend, Dr. Castile, who has been the guiding force behind this since the beginning, has, she, I get quite a few messages from her, "Oh, you might want to contact so-and-so. They do such and such." And we are setting up a very robust service plan for the folks that will occupy this housing.
Just want to comment. I'm not the expert on this, but I do know that there are individuals who are out every Thursday servicing and working with the homeless. And I, you might want to inquire through Open Sky or Dr. Castile who those individuals are because they do a lot of work with homeless specifically.
We particularly have a good relate, a great relationship with Elliot Community Services. We also have relationships with all of the other service organizations that serve homeless or recently homeless or formerly homeless populations. Because we own three SRO lodging houses, which are post-homelessness. They're sober houses and some, some units have rent, project-based rent subsidies. So we are actively working with the intake communities and the, the folks who provide services to these individuals that, that need help. So we'll build on that.
Thank you.
Trustees on nine, any other questions? Nope, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, Curtis Apartments Phase Two for rental.
All righty. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Vivian Lee. I work for Trinity Financial and I'm here with my colleague, Michael Lozano. Trinity is the Worcester Housing Authority's development partner for Curtis Apartments. And we're here today regarding our application for $250,000 of AHTF funding for the second phase of the Curtis redevelopment. Thank you. So relative to the total development costs of $146 million, $250,000 is less than 1%. It may seem quite small, but it is the very last piece of funding to secure for the project. So with that, it is also a very, very critical piece of funding for the project. And this phase previously received an award of $250,000 of home funds from the city. Subsequent to that award, the home funds became subject to Build America by America provisions. And out of all 146 million of the sources, this is the only piece that is subject to BABA requirements. And in addition to that, use of those funds would subject the entire project, all 146 million, to BABA provisions. So we've submitted this application to the board in the same amount of the home funds. We would be able to return the, return the home funds to the city. And with this last piece of AHTF funding, the project can progress to financial closing and construction start. And this project has had great momentum. We are thankful to the board for its continued support and previous awards to the project. And I know that the board is familiar with this project, so I will move through the other slides quickly. Jeanette, we actually can stay on that, on that previous slide here. Just a quick overview on the second phase here. So Phase Two will see the demolition of 140, 100, excuse me, 114 existing apartments, which will then be replaced with 150 brand-new apartments. 116 of those will be replacement public housing units. And all Curtis residents will have the right to return. We're building a new town green, updating infrastructure and utility ways and providing 198 parking spaces. And all three buildings will be fully accessible and passive house certified. So the first residential building on the left will have, will have 71 units. The second building in the middle will have 55. And then the third building on the right here will be the Worcester Housing Authority's Economic Opportunity Center. And this will be a mixed-use building with residential and community spaces. And we can go to the next slide. So the EOC is a really special part of this project. This building will have 24 residential apartments. It will have Worcester Housing Authority offices, resident services, community facility space. And the images on the screen here are of the new Worcester Public Library. That will also be part of the EOC building. And for this building, we actually planned an early construction start. So we've already begun abatement and demolition for this portion of the project. And with that, this, this project really is shovel-ready. And because of that, we were able to start construction on the EOC in August. The project has all of the necessary approvals from the city. We have all three building permits in hand. And we have an executed contract with a general contractor. So swapping the home funds for the AHTF funds, that really is the last piece to progress this project to financial close and construction start. And again, thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to present our application. We're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Open it up to the trustees for questions.
Through the chair. Most of the tenants are moved out or will be moved out?
Yes, and we're working with Housing Opportunities Unlimited, a relocation specialist to facilitate the relocation of tenants off-site. And then when the buildings are ready for them to return, we will also work with them to bring families back onto site.
And what did you say that number was that would have an opportunity for us?
So 100% of the Curtis residents that are there now relocated will have the right to return.
And so additional?
Net new. In this case, it's 114, in this specific phase, 114, net of 150, so 36.
36. Is it going to be multi-level age-wise? Or are you looking specifically to get certain age groups in there? Or it doesn't really matter?
This isn't specific to a particular age group. It's a lot of families, many older people as well, but not specific based on any age demographic.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. I remember there was, I'm trying to recall which phase it was part of. It doesn't show it on here, so I'm assuming not. But regarding, there were first-time homebuyer units as well that... Is it a different project? Wasn't Curtis? Different project by you guys? All right, never mind. I'm just gonna shut my mic off.
Yes.
Through the chair. So I have questions about the relocation process. As far as what agency will you be working with? I know you just stated it, but my mind is gone right now.
No worries.
And what would the options be? Because I know on Phase One, there were options such as moving to another either building or housing project or the chance for, I think there was some monies put forth for a down deposit on a home. Section Eight vouchers were also being offered. Being that we're in the critical stages with our, our government financially when it comes to Section Eight and things of that matter, what would the plan be currently?
So we are working with Housing Opportunities Unlimited for the second phase of relocation. They were also the consultant on the first phase. There will be an additional resource in, in the second phase of relocation because we've made excellent progress on the construction for the first phase of the project. So one of the two buildings from Phase One will actually be coming online, which will help as a resource in relocating Phase Two families in buildings that will need to be vacant for demolition for this portion of the project. But in addition to that, HOU is also facilitating relocation throughout the... But in addition to that, HOU is also facilitating relocation throughout the Worcester Housing Authority portfolio. And as you mentioned, Section Eight vouchers, that is not something that we're actually working with as a resource right now. I'm not sure if there's anything you would want to add to that, but on relocation.
Okay, and my final question goes to pretty much the state of the setup. As far as I know, that it was a huge project, and they were like reconstructing roads and streets and things of that nature. Is that part of this phase as well?
We are, we do have roadway and infrastructure work in addition to that utility work. This portion of the project for Phase Two will also include a town green, which is across this, which will be across the street from the Economic Opportunity Center. But this will, you know, progress on the redevelopment of the entire site, including the roadways and utility ways.
Thank you.
Other trustees online?
Oh, I'm sorry, through the chair. I forgot, I have one more question. As far as when the tenants do decide if they're going to come back or move back into the dwellings, is there an application process, or is it an immediate kind of, okay, yes, you have your spot back?
So HOU is actually working with tenants several months in advance of the reoccupancy period. So in the case of Phase One now, and what will be the case for Phase Two, they go by the relocation and reoccupancy plan, which engages those tenants several months in advance. And then there are opportunities to check in with the tenants, and they can then waive their right to return if they wish. But until that happens, they do have the right to return.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
No worries.
Any other trustees?
So I guess I just have two questions. The first, this project's a little bit higher on the total development cost from what we see here at the trust fund. With things going on with tariffs and everything, how, what would be the plan to limit any financial exposure if there's additional costs?
Great question. Great, great question. It's something that we've been wrestling with, and we've always been worried about that, too. It's one of the reasons we're actually here, because we're trying to manage that by dealing with this Build America by America provision that we're talking about. We've actually built into our construction contract an allowance that will absorb any unknown tariffs as we go. So working closely with the contractor, we've sort of put aside a small part of contingency that can be drawn upon if there are any unforeseen tariffs that we would see. So we're feeling that our exposure at this point is pretty low, and we have other contingencies. We're dealing with all sorts of unknowns as we go through transitions in the federal government right now, but I think we're managing okay.
Great. And then just kind of a little bit of a follow-up to that. With the Economic Opportunity Center, the trust fund, funds are specific to residential. Would there be a way, a mechanism in place to just, if funds were awarded, to just go towards a residential rather than the economic?
Yes, absolutely. Not a problem at all. And in fact, we could dedicate them to one or the two fully residential buildings and keep them completely out of the mixed-use building if that was the desired sort of mechanism. So there's ways to sort of, to parcel the funds as any of the sort of financing requirements come into play.
Thank you. Any other questions, trustees? Thank you. All right, next, 33 Ripley Street Home Ownership Project.
What's that? It did. Do you have a thumb drive, but did you say you can't take those? Okay. Absolutely.
Trustees online, Jeanette's just bringing up the presentation.
I can work without it if that's what we need to do. That's not a problem. Gotcha. Thank you so much. Okay. Hello, I'm Debbie Maruka-Hoke. I'm the CEO of Habitat for Humanity, Metro West Greater Worcester. And with me tonight, I have Paul Rabello, our construction manager. The project that we're here to talk about first is 33 Ripley Street in Worcester. So this property was a vacant lot. It was purchased through a bid process from the city. It's a tax title property. The site has been cleared at this point. Yeah, right there, the project timeline is fine. The site has been cleared at this point. We have installed a retaining wall, which was necessary because it's a very steeply sloped site, and excavation has begun for the foundation. Honestly, I think probably the floor plan is the slide that's the most helpful. The plan for the project is to build a new four-bedroom, two-bathroom home with ADA accessibility on the first floor, aging in place. So there's a first-floor bedroom and a first-floor bathroom. Habitat recently completed two homes with this same floor plan at Sunderland Road. And we actually have a third home with the same floor plan under construction at 13 Holly Street right now. So it's a site plan that we are familiar with and that the city is familiar with. And we know the demand for the properties. For the last round of applications, we had more than 20 families in the lottery for each of the homes. The timeline. Thank you for trying, and I apologize for getting those to you late. I didn't realize I couldn't give you a thumb drive. But we'll know. So groundbreaking took place on this property in May. Site work between June and October, and that has come to a completion. Construction has started, and we anticipate completing construction with family moving in by September of 2026. Habitat has worked very closely with EOHLC. We are familiar with the LIP LEU process and marketing and performing the lottery process for family selection. Our home will be sold to families making between 30% and 60% of the AMI. And Habitat's model is that we don't set the sale price of the home until the family is selected. So 60% AMI is used to calculate the maximum sale price, and then the sale price is brought down to what the family can afford at no more than 30% of their current income. Trying to see if there's anything else that I missed in there. I don't think so. What questions can I answer? Yes, we are requesting $150,000 from the Housing Trust. And that combined with Habitat's fundraising and the home sale at the end of the project is, will comprise the full amount of the uses of funds for the project.
All right. Open it up to trustees for questions.
Through the chair. I just wanted to know, like, have you already chosen your applicants? What was the process, or what is the process on how you choose someone to be involved in obtaining one of these homes and the sweat equity put into it? And what agencies have you used or do you use to put the information out?
So we've not done family selection or marketing for this unit yet. To put it on to the subsidized housing inventory, our marketing plan would need to be approved by EOHLC before we began the marketing. We do have a marketing plan template that is pre-approved by EOHLC to expedite that process for us, along with a specific list of agencies, including Worcester Schools, the Housing Authorities, Town Halls, and various online media agencies, as well as marketing through Habitat's social media and our outreach. We also have an ongoing list of interested parties that we track emails for, and when we have a housing opportunity available, mark, you know, send an email blast to all of those folks to let them know that the marketing is open, applications are open. Habitat then holds at least two in-person information sessions and at least two virtual information sessions during the 60 days that our application process is open to give folks information about working with Habitat, about completing sweat equity, because it didn't mention that the applicant family that is chosen will work with us for 300 hours between construction hours and education hours, preparing them for homeownership. And so we hold information sessions to provide additional details about that and to answer any questions about our application process. At the end of the 60-day open marketing period, all eligible applicants are entered into a lottery, and we select all of the families in order through a random drawing, and then rerank that order according to bedroom size. So there is a preference for a family that will fill the bedrooms. So if we have a single individual in a four-bedroom home, they would have a lower preference than a family that need to fill all three of the bedrooms as well as the master.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, trustees? All right, thank you. Moving on, you have a second application for 104 Armory Street.
So 104 Armory Street is another vacant lot in Worcester, at the south end of Worcester. It is a Brownfield site. We did purchase that site also from the city. We have a terms of conveyance document signed and approved by the city. We have not conveyed ownership. Phase Two environmental testing has been completed, identifying the next steps are required for remediation. So Habitat has received at this point two LSP quotes and are waiting for a third quote so that we can choose the LSP provider who will do the remediation. The Phase Two environmental report indicated that there is coal and ash, so it is a light remediation that's required, but about three feet of topsoil needs to be removed from the full site, as well as what is excavated for the foundation. The project on that property will be two four-bedroom units, so same floor plan as proposed for 33 Ripley, except there will be two of them with a shared party wall. Habitat completed a project a couple of years ago at Harrison Street, 81 Harrison Street. And the way that we did that project, it was three units that were all connected, and we offset the middle unit so that it's not one flat wall across the front. We would do the same thing with this project, where we would offset the two units, creating a break, a visual break in the front, and also a continuation break with the roofing, which allows each family to be responsible for the care and maintenance of their own unit without relying on the other, the family next door. It will be a condo in that the site cannot be subdivided, but each family will have responsibility for their own driveways, their own roof, their own siding. So there's, the only shared resources would be if there's easement access for utility lines running across the properties. That one?
Thank you.
Sorry, from a funding perspective, total project cost on that one is 1.3 million, including the environmental remediation. And our request from the Housing Trust is 300,150 per unit. The family selection, marketing, and lottery would mirror the same as the 33 Ripley property.
Thank you. Open it up to trustees for questions.
Through the chair. Thank you for both applications. On 104 Armory Street, it is condoized, I understand that. So have you decided what the condo fees will be and what those fees will include? Specifically, will there be a reserve fund for future repairs as, you know, things eventually age?
So because we will have the break between the two units, and there are no shared facilities between the units, so each homeowner is responsible for their own roof repair, their own siding repair, windows, doors, et cetera. The reserve fund isn't necessary because there are no common areas that require maintenance. It's the address itself and the easement that creates the need for it to be a condo, but there won't be condo dues associated with the property.
Through the chair. So in, really, it's single-family attached, except under the rules it would be a condo, will there be master insurance requirements because it's a condo? Or is it just going to be individual, single-family attached homeowner insurance?
So there have been times that we've been able to navigate insurance and allow for single-family attached, and then there have also been times where that's not been allowed, and it's been site-specific. If it is attached, then each family will be responsible for a proportionate share, but in this case, it would be 50/50 of the master condo insurance, and then they would each individually pay their unit insurance.
Thank you. I don't think I have any other questions.
Trustees online? Going once, going twice.
Down the hall, they just clapped for me, and I think that means the meeting's over. So thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Good night.
And that concludes our presentations for tonight. Moving on to the next agenda item, next steps in this process, post-presentation. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Tozer.
Thank you. So through the chair, and the trustees will be completing their scoring. I do want to have a discussion about that with the board. We had scheduled October 8th as a placeholder for the next meeting of the board. It was really going to depend on the level of due diligence that needed to be conducted for this round of applications, and I vastly underestimated the amount of time that it requires. So I do, I do want us to have a discussion about rescheduling it to allow a little bit more time to follow up on some of the questions that were brought up tonight. more time to follow up on some of the questions that were brought up tonight and to answer some questions to make sure that as you're scoring and awarding conditional commitments of funding to projects, that they are able to meet all of the requirements for the trust fund. So we'll get to that, but before we talk about the date, I do want to go over a little bit about the scoring. So consistency is important to maintain fairness and transparency. So each trustee will be using the same scoring method for all eight applications. The scoring matrix was part of the RFP on the trust fund website that has been provided to all of the trustees. Also, as a reminder, applicants not funded due to limited resources, this round may reapply in the future. Applications that are denied due to low or non-competitive scores are subject to a one-year cooling-off period. So as you're scoring, you can keep that in mind. That doesn't necessarily mean it's the end of the road for a project if they are competitive, but we have 1.25 million, and we have almost 1.9 million in asks. I also, last on that, I want to underscore that the decisions you'll make are not just about allocating dollars. They're really, you know, shaping Worcester's housing future. So this is our first round of funding post-American Rescue Plan Act funding, post-adopting the new strategic plan for the board. So I think it's really important, this is going to set the tone, I think, for the next five years, to ensure that the trust is making transparent, equitable, and high-impact investments. So now getting back to business, through the chair, I think we should discuss moving the October 8th meeting to either, that's a Wednesday, to either the following Wednesday, October 15th, Thursday, the 16th, or Wednesday, October 22nd, so that all trustees can be present for the scoring review and funding decisions.
Trustees, any preference?
What was, the 15th, and what's the next date after that?
The 16th or October 22nd?
I'm okay with the 16th or the 22nd. Either one works for me.
Through the chair, I would prefer either the 15th or the 22nd.
I think I prefer the 22nd.
15th would be better for me.
Through the chair.
But I can make either work.
Okay, one more time. Through the chair, the only date that I can make it is the 22nd. If it's different, I'll let you know. I left my calendar at home, but I think it's the 22nd.
Trustee Hampton Dance, do you have a preference?
The 22nd is fine if that's, if that's comfortable for everybody else's schedule. I don't mind.
So through the chair, if my note-taking is correct, I think everyone has said that they can make the 22nd work.
Okay, looks like the 22nd. We will schedule that meeting.
So through the chair, I'll have to secure a location. If there are no meeting rooms available, it will be virtual, but that will be determined over the next week.
And just to clarify, Ms. Tozer, so applicants will be given an email or something to let them know of the online option to attend?
Yes, through the chair, I will send follow-up emails to all of the applicants with details about next steps.
Great. And with that, that was our last agenda item of the night. Is there a motion to adjourn the September 30th, 2025 meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees?
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Make the motion.
All right, on that, trustee Agadello Ortiz.
Yes.
Trustee Brooks, yes. Trustee Hampton Dance?
Yes.
Trustee Kafour?
Yes.
Trustee McOvay? I said that wrong.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Trustee Pinkholm?
Yes.
And trustee Valdez. And on that, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.